Oh, there it goes. I'm here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the superintendent's update. Dr. Rab?
Thank you, Mrs. Gropey, members of the committee. I only have one update this evening, and I just wanted to let the committee know that last Wednesday evening I sent a message to the entire community about the issue in keeping classrooms neutral. And after the students staged a protest at the high school, I felt it was important to put something in writing to the entire community so that my message was consistent and that everybody had the words directly from me. It was also important to note that this decision was mine and was not from the school committee, because there were a lot of people who were talking in different conversations that I've had and were suggesting that the decision had been made by the school committee or this was an updated school committee policy. And that's not the case. This is a directive from leadership. This is a directive from me to keep our classrooms neutral. Motivated because I wanted to make sure that we weren't picking and choosing which flags, materials, or posters, or anything was being put on the classroom walls. We wanted to make sure the classroom walls remain neutral, and we couldn't pick and choose between one type of material or another. I had mentioned before and again that we put up progressive ally stickers in all the classrooms, grade six to 12. In addition to that, and I didn't mention it in my notice, we also bought ally lanyards for any teacher who wants one. So any teacher who's interested, they can see their principal at the middle school or the high school, and they can self-identify as somebody who is an ally of students and a friend to students. It's important, because if a student needs to find somebody who they know as a friend, who they know as an ally, by looking at the lanyard, a student can identify that way. And also, as I was thinking about the whole issue, one of the most important ways that we support all of our students is by our trained staff. And I think that was important to say as well, and so I included it in my message last week, is that we do have a veteran, well-chained, and educated faculty and staff who meet the needs of all of our students, and especially those who face challenges coming to school. It's that well-trained and educated staff that is helping our students at risk, that is helping our students who need anything extra to make it through the school day. And I think it's important that we acknowledge the hard work that that staff is doing. So I just wanted to say that and update the committee as we begin.
Thank you for the update. I do think that at this point I just wanted to acknowledge it and thank you for saying that. I think that what's important from -- I'm only one of five, but I think it's important from our perspective that you're able to speak on that. I know that I've talked to you many times about it, how I felt, and I had a lot of questions. And what I hope is that as you continue to have discussions with the student body and parents, that you're open to the feedback, and you're able to assess like how people are feeling and continue to do that, and we'll see, you know, what comes from that. And Ms. Miller, I do want to thank you as well, because I know that you've been part of some of those discussions with those students and trying to support them as well. But my only hope is that in the future, when we have things that we implement, that we do them in a slow manner and that we get stakeholder input before we make decisions like this, and that we take everything into account. And I'm hoping that while we're looking at the reorganization in the guidance office, that we're able to offer more support to those students that need it. So that would be something that I just think it's important, and I just ask that you consider that and try to do as much as you can to support these students. I don't know if anybody else has any comments or anything to add?
No, you basically said everything, but as you can tell, this is a very -- the community is very strong, and they really -- it would have been beneficial to have talks before that this kind of decision was being made. But I'm not going to be a Monday morning quarterback, so -- and I do appreciate all the conversations you have been having with students and parents regarding this.
Okay. Thank you. Anyways, we're moving on to the next portion of the meeting, which is public comment. I have the public comment sign-up sheet. You have four people signed up. Just want to remind folks, you have three minutes for public comment. And Katie is very good with a timer, so she will time and let you know, and she'll give you a hands up whoever signed up when you're getting to 10 seconds close to where you need to end. I do want to be clear that due to privacy issues, confidential information about a student personnel, medical information are prohibited, and rumors presented as fact are also prohibited. We want to make sure that we're careful with that. And in addition, we just want to keep this civil. And we're open here. Yeah.
That was my face maker.
Thank you for the joke. Okay, so the first person we have on the agenda is Lisa Lyons. So I'm going to ask Lisa Lyons to come to the microphone, and if you can just give your full name and address.
Yeah, I just want to make sure people can hear. Okay. My name is Lisa Lyons. I'm a Stoughton resident, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to express our emphatic support of the school's decision to keep the school walls unbiased and academically focused. I stand here before you representing parents, grandparents, and concerned citizens, many of which who cannot be here tonight. We extend a heartfelt thank you to teachers, Dr. Rab, and school committee members for your dedication, and seeing our children's academic education is the main focus. We support having only the American flag represented in our schools. Having other flags can be discriminatory, divisive, controversial, and distracts from academics. A flag does not present multiple sides of a subject. It is a symbol. In an 1861 address by Henry Ward Beecher, "Henry's vision of America symbolized in our flag echoed our founders' ideal, that every man shall have liberty to be what God made him without hindrance. Not another flag has had such an errand carrying everywhere, the world around, such hope for freedom, such glorious tidings. This supreme idea, divine right of liberty in man, every color means liberty, every form of star and beam or stripe of light means liberty, not lawlessness, not license, but organized institutional liberty, liberty through law and law for liberty. If we could put our energy into reclaiming our founding vision as a pluralistic society and provide the broadest possible canvas for human freedom, we could reshape the world for the better instead of endlessly creating and repeating grievances. Flags do not make our schools safe. People make our schools safe. If safety is a concern for any student, there are parents, teachers, guidance counselors, and coaches to guide the students at large of a zero tolerance for violence and bullying. It is a parent's job to raise their children with their values and how to handle differences. It is not the state or school's job to be involved in social justice causes. We heard a concern of finding an adult to trust. Trusting is a lifelong learned process of discernment for all of us. We need to let children become resilient and learn to discern whom they can trust. It is not the school's job to portray alternative lifestyles or support movements with the flag in an academic setting. It would become a slippery slope and takes away from our diverse population, whom all can focus on academics and the freedom our American flag represents. Again, we extend appreciation of this wise policy --
Thank you very much.
-- to get the focus back to education and away from controversial social justice issues.
All right, Lisa, thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next person we have on the agenda. I'm just going to ask for folks to keep it down, just because we do have some students in here, and I think we have a student that's going to be speaking. So I'm going to ask for Olivia Tran to come to the microphone. If you don't mind just saying your name and address. Hi.
Olivia Tran. Wait, what? Sorry. 965 West Street.
Sorry. It's okay.
Should I repeat what I had said?
No, you don't have to.
My name is Olivia Tran. I have been enrolled in Stoughton Public Schools since kindergarten. It is now my senior year at Stoughton High School. I will soon end my enrollment with a 4.2 GPA after participating in mainly honors and AP classes. In my report cards, I have been described as a soft-spoken, obedient student. I do not cause disruptions, and until Wednesday, January 4th, I have not gotten in trouble. On Wednesday of last week, I was suspended for standing on a staircase and holding a pride flag in front of the administrative office. I resorted to this peaceful protest after having two meetings, one with Principal Miller and then another with Principal Miller and Superintendent Rab, where it was made very clear to me that Rab will not change his mind about the flags. During this protest, I respectfully let the administration know my position, and I did not cause any disruption. I stood there quietly, speaking when spoken to. After my suspension, I went home. Honestly, I was terrified. I had never done this before, and I didn't know what to do next. I didn't even know if I had the strength to do it. But my little brother approached me while I was sitting in the kitchen, and he thanked me for what I had done. For some context, he is a part of the LGBTQ community. That right there meant more to me than my fears. That was when I had made the decision to continue with what I was doing. As a bisexual Asian-American female, I am standing here to inform anyone whom it may concern that the ally stickers placed outside of classroom doors does not take away from the absence of pride and Black Lives Matter flags. Intended or not, you are telling everyone who falls under either of those categories that they do not deserve to be represented. That as long as Superintendent Rab feels he is right in this decision, the voices of everyone else hold no importance. Those flags, no matter how unimportant they may seem to you, hold an immeasurable amount of importance to me and the people who have signed the petition I have created, which is counting over 600 people and many more. You want to keep a neutral classroom, but it is impossible to be neutral in this decision. If you ban them, you choose hate. You choose to take down flags that demonstrate the support of so many people. These flags do not discriminate against anyone. They do not hurt anyone. So why are they controversial? If you choose to hang them, you choose love. You choose to demonstrate your support and ethics by allowing these flags to hang and inherently supporting the affected community. There is no other solution that could possibly measure up to putting those flags back up in the classrooms. What do you choose? Because there is no neutral, there is no in-between, and there isn't an option of neither. Which is it? Love or hate? Hang the flags or ban them? As students recite to the American flag that is still allowed to hang in the school with liberty and justice for all, I ask the school community to give us the justice we deserve.
Thank you. Thank you, Olivia. So the next person on the public comment list is Rabbi Henry Morse?
Yes.
Okay. If you don't mind, just --
Welcome, everyone. I am Rabbi Henry Morse from Stoughton, Massachusetts. My congregation is right around the corner. I live here, and I have my congregation here. I'll make this quick. In regards to BLM, Antifa, trans rights, and groups of that kind, if you want people to succeed, teach them family values. Teach them abstinence before marriage. Teach them a trade. Teach them while they are young, and don't excuse bad behavior. Don't stoke the flames of prejudice and hate as these groups do by holding other people responsible for crimes they didn't commit. Teach what we have learned from history, and even the redemptive side of it as well, the good and the bad. These groups pose as social justice warriors, inventing causes that go nowhere, like tearing down meaningless statues in the name of equality and equity. That gesture is an empty platitude. All it does is give the impression that they've done something significant, when all they've really done is put a bandage on a missing limb when it needs a tourniquet. All these groups do is throw bombs into an already volatile situation and then propose to fix the problem they caused with more fuel on the fire, and often that's literal fuel. I am a Jew, and my brethren have been persecuted since the days of Moses and Pharaoh. Do I hate all Egyptians? Do I demand reparations from all Germans? Have my people ever burnt downtowns they were expelled from in every country? Do my people suffer from white privilege? We were expelled from our own land by the Romans. We were expelled from Muslim lands, England, France, Spain, Russia. I could go on ad nauseam. Jewish lives matter too, don't they? If we're going to use cliché. How about the Japanese and the internment camps? Why didn't they rise up in the hour of their oppression and burn things down and loot? Why is it that concerning these groups that this behavior is acceptable to anyone? Who benefits from this behavior? If anyone supports these groups, all they're doing is supporting anarchy, because that's what they do wherever they go. They burn, they loot, they sexualize our children and cause violence against anyone who are not them. They take their game plan out of the book called Rules for Radicals, written by Saul Alinsky, which this book was dedicated to Lucifer. They create a problem and then pose as if they are the ones who will fix the very same crisis they created. In the name of BLM, Antifa, multiple cities all over the country burnt down. And why would anyone want to support this agenda? Isn't there a better way to handle this matter, or are we without any creative imagination? If anyone supports these groups in schools and displays their flags, they are either woefully naive, intellectually dishonest, or misguided. We support the efforts of those on the board and Superintendent Dr. Rab in keeping these flags and ideologies out of schools. Teach academics, not ideologies. Thank you.
Thank you. So now I'm going to -- we have the last speaker, Jonah Roberts. Jonah, I'm sorry.
It's called Johnny.
Oh, okay. That was probably my next guess. But if you don't mind giving your full name and address.
Yes, Jonah Roberts, 152 Dean Road, Stoughton. If you don't mind, just a little louder. Is that okay, so we can hear you? Jonah Roberts, 152 Dean Road, Stoughton. There you go. That's good. It'll catch you. Okay. Okay, you're welcome. First of all, I feel the best way to handle this issue is not to entertain the merits of each group's flag, because we need to keep that completely out of the discussion. The best and the most fair solution, the most magnanimous way to handle it, is to just revert back to the original precedent of the American flag alone, because it stands for all of us, U.S., not just subsets of society. The American flag is all-inclusive, unlike the other flags. And school is meant to be a safe haven for learning, not a bastion for social justice issues. So if you open the door to these flags, then you're just opening the door to all groups' flags, which could potentially include a Nazi flag, a Confederate flag, or even a MAGA flag, or a white supremacist flag. And I don't want any of that, which in turn will expose us to vitriol and division associated with the flags. That's the aspect I think we need to focus on. You have to pick your battles. If you open the door to these two flags, then you will be expected to open the door to flags of all the other aforementioned that I had said and more. And this could turn potentially into lawsuits, more protests, more division, and more hate. And I just don't want to see the hate anymore, the division. I'm so sick of it. I have nothing against black people --
Please address the chair if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, that's all right.
Okay, I don't have anything against LGBTQ or any minority, anything. I just think we have to pick our battles and put social justice outside of the school, because there are people that see the flag and they don't like it. So why should they have to be subjected to it? If it's not there at all for anyone, then there's no issues for us. Nobody has to be fighting, no division, no hatred. You want to go -- you want to pick your battles? That's what you should be doing, because they're not saying you can't be in a group outside of school or something. That's not the issue here. It's a flag. Pick your battles. It's not that important. And what it could transgress into is something much more volatile and much more detrimental. So in the ability for us to have more peace and less division, which is the whole crux of why I wanted to speak, I think you really have to realize that the American flag is the one flag that we can all stand behind, because it's all-inclusive, it's for all of us, there's nobody left out, and if we're not united, we will stand, and divided will fall.
Thank you. Okay. So what I'm going to now do is ask that we take a five-minute break, as part of public comment is over. So we're just going to take a five-minute break to pause and give some folks some room to make some -- yeah, to make some room within the meeting room. Okay. So everybody's just going to mute for a second, and I'm going to get up and check with Snap. You all right? High School Program of Studies presentation approval. I'd like to welcome Ms. Miller to the meeting. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. This is one of my favorite things to present about, is our Program of Studies at Stoughton High School. It's a program of studies that I am very proud of. Our leadership team at the high school works very hard every year to review and evaluate our offerings and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students in the classroom academically. This year, we are making several recommendations, mostly in the area of fine arts, but some other smaller recommendations throughout the catalog. So I'll try to go through those briefly. Please feel free to stop me and ask any questions as we go. I don't mind taking them as we go. The first recommended change actually falls on page 10 of the Program of Studies, and it is a recommendation to look at the promotion criteria for our students, leaving the classes of 24, 25, and 26 alone and not changing those since they entered the high school and are already operating under a certain criteria. It is, you know, deemed to be more equitable to start with the incoming class of 2027 when changing graduation requirements. And so the recommendation there is to change the promotion criteria from one grade to the next for the class of 2027, to go from grade nine to grade 10 to have earned 32 and a half credits instead of 27 and a half, to go from 10 to 11, 65 credits instead of 60, and to go from 11 to 12, 95 credits instead of 90. The reason for the change is we have been operating now for quite some time under an eight-period schedule. Our students take a real full schedule at eight classes in both their freshman and sophomores and then sophomore years, and then sort of drop down maybe a class or two in their junior and senior years. However, for a very small number of students who may struggle with their graduation requirements, if they actually enter their senior year having only 90 credits, even if they take a full boat of classes in their senior year, don't have enough to graduate by the end of the year. They would only have 130 credits. They actually need 135 credits to graduate. They would be able to walk and participate in the ceremony, but they actually wouldn't earn their diploma until completing whatever credits they needed in the summer. So to be -- to prepare students and families more appropriately, the suggestion is to bump those credits up by five for each grade, so that by the time that small number of students hit their 12th grade year, they actually have the opportunity to graduate at the end of that senior year, if that's -- again, it's a small number of students that fall in that boat. In the business department, really, the only changes are off-cycling some classes, and by what I mean by that is taking a look at either having some classes offered in some years and others in others, or taking them offline for next year. And the reason for that is we have a bountiful Program of Studies. You'll see it, over 150 courses offered to our students. We have a limited number of classrooms and a limited number of staff. And when we build those -- that schedule, we build the schedule based on course requests. And what happens often is when you have so many requests and kids opt for so many different kinds of choices, we end up running into some opportunities where we can't get the classes the kids actually want, because they have spread themselves so wildly differently. And so in order to be able to really offer a strong program, make -- build a schedule for kids that makes sense, and one that actually can run in a building, the choice by business was to take accounting and Microsoft Office and play them off of each other, so one would be offered in one year and one would be offered in the other, so that students would still have the opportunity to take those classes, just not in the same year. And then graphic design, we're holding off due to a staffing change for next year. We anticipate a retirement, and that is a class that we need to really see what kind of staff we end up hiring to replace that retirement before offering that graphic design class. In English, we have in the 12th grade in -- for English, you know, our students take grade nine English and ninth grade, grade 10 English, and 10th grade, grade 11 English. And grade 11 is not all that creative. And then in 12th grade, though, they do have the option where they can take a variety of different courses. They can take an AP English, they can take grade 12 honors English, or they can take a variety of semester classes, take at least two of them, put it together, and make a full-year English. Those varieties run in one of two categories. Either their focus is primarily reading, or their focus is primarily writing. Some students obviously favor one over the other, and rather than have students only elect writing or only elect reading, the English department really wants to make sure that we're graduating seniors that are prepared in both. And so they're suggesting in their recommendations on pages 24 and 25, that having seniors who elect to take semester English classes rather than a full-year English class, to have to select one class that focuses on literature and one class that focuses on writing. And then on those pages, on 24 and 25, you'll see throughout those courses which courses fall under which category for students to select. Fine arts really is suggesting the most changes, and I would say that is for two reasons. One, now that we are in the new building and actually operating in a full, normal, typical year, we have the opportunity to really use that -- those spaces and those new spaces really are driving really the growth that we had hoped for in both our music and our drama programs. In addition to that, we added a drama teacher last year, and so now that we have a full-time drama teacher in the district, it is -- who is an expert in the field and a professional in the field, he has a lot of suggestions in terms of really building that program. And so this is where you'll see most of the changes that are recommended in terms of course offerings. We had two courses in the course catalog currently, one called Music Production 1 and one called Music Production 2, and -- sorry, Computer Music 1 and Computer Music 2. But we don't just teach computer music. That's an outdated title. It's an outdated course description. Our students produce lots of music, not simply through GarageBand, which is what the old catalog talked about. And so to be more truthful and honest about those topics that will be covered, it is Music Production 1 and 2. That's the suggestion with a revised description that talks about the current technologies that we're actually using to build those classes. So it's just -- that's basically just sort of a replacement and a revision. We offer music theory currently at the college level, but it is really an advanced type of course. By the time students elect music theory, those students are typically thinking about entering college studying music or taking some kind of program to future that -- kind of program to enhance that education in their college years and beyond. So because of the rigor, the suggestion is to make that an honors course rather than a college course. We started songwriting either one or two years ago. It is a wonderful course, but again, it is sort of pigeonholing our students who want to do more than just write songs. So the suggestion is to create a course called Advanced Topics in Music. Students would still be able to work on songwriting if that is their passion and desire, but it would also be a space and class content area where they could also study advanced instrumental and vocal techniques, helping to apply to music school and composition theory and musicology. So for those of you who may not be familiar with music majors, when they go into college, they have to audition, they have to put together those kinds of portfolios, and so it really does take a lot to prep for that application. It's more than writing essays. There's a lot of prep that goes into, and that course would allow them to do that. That would be offered at the honors level. Getting more into the visual arts, we currently offer a course called Drawing and Painting 2. We offer Drawing and Painting 1 as well. However, it is the opinion of our artistic professionals who believe that by the time students elect the second year of that course, they have sort of already determined what medium they like to work in, whether it's painting or drawing. And so rather than hold them to both, drawing and painting, we are suggesting to split that course apart, having Painting 2 and Drawing 2 as two separate options. Students could certainly elect both if they wanted to, but they could elect only one if they wanted as well, and then they still have the option of doing the advanced artwork in their third year if they want to take that. Moving on, for the same reasons that I talked about in music theory, studio art is the rigorous art portfolio-based class preparing students who want to apply for art schools. And so the suggestion is that the studio art class, which is currently offered at the college level, should be offered at the honors level. With the introduction of Mr. Halleck, our fabulous drama teacher, he is -- has made some changes to our theater course offerings, and in doing so recommends that the course that -- which was originally called Introduction to Theater Arts be changed to Introduction to Acting. So it is simply a name change. And the reason for that is there are other courses within the theater program currently for -- or being recommended that address the very many other areas of theater arts. And so it's not just this one broad category, theater arts, but starting to narrow it down to more specific areas. So Introduction to Acting is the suggestion. Again, another off-cycling. Again, another off-cycling, as we only have one drama teacher who teaches three periods for us, we can't possibly offer all of the offerings we would like to in one year. So we offered theater for social change and theater production this current year, so we are taking them offline for next year, and we'll offer them in the following year, allowing us to offer our students two new course offerings if they have already, many of whom have already taken the ones that we're off-cycling. So the recommendation is to add improvisation and sketch comedy, and to add an advanced acting studio, which would be the drama, the drama companion to your courses of studio art, which is at the honors level, and music theory, which is at the honors level, except this would be at the dramatic productions level, and it would be an honors-level course, helping our students who are preparing for acting careers, theater careers, or applying for those positions in colleges or universities. In mathematics, we have done several different kinds of support labs in the past. You've heard me talk about Math Lab 1s, 2s, and 3s. We've done Algebra Labs, Geometry Labs, Algebra II Labs. Next year, we are going to, because of the needs of our students who are currently in our building and what, when we look at what they have for MCAS needs now and in the future, we're going to take Math Lab 2 and 3 off the table and add Algebra 1 support for our ninth-grade students to really help support their Algebra 1 work, make sure that they are, have a nice, strong foundation to be able to take geometry the following year and be ready for the MCAS in their 10th grade year. And finally, in applied and natural sciences, because the science fair is something that students can do on their own, and we want to expand to more than just the science fair and continue, continue to build our Night of Excellence, which is something we added to our program maybe five or six years ago now. Rather than just restrict our AP Bio, AP Chemistry, and AP Physics students just to science fair projects, we're expanding beyond that and asking them to complete projects that can be presented at Night of Excellence. If they still want to do a science fair project, they certainly can. We will encourage and be able to work with them on that, but we want to make it much broader to encompass many more students of many more topics. And so it's just a change in expectations in the course offerings.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Any questions?
I have to ask, I do, I have one. All the work that goes into making these changes, is it your direct department directors?
It is. It's my leadership team. It's a fabulous team.
Yeah, and they meet like with all of the teachers within the departments, and that's how they?
We do. Yeah, we start, I have, it's a large team. We've grown over the years. I have, the leadership team is made up of all of the department directors, unit B administrators that interact or work with the high school level, so your curriculum coordinators. And we meet, we meet once a cycle, so once every eight days, our team meets. They're pretty used to our timeline, so they always know when the program of studies is coming up, but they start talking about these things well in advance. And they work together with the teachers and the students. Sometimes there are surveys that have gone out. The business department conducted a large survey last year of our middle-school students to really try to help us decide what we wanted to run in the high school level. And so they work really hard to do that, and take their, their roles very seriously and our students' futures very seriously, and really proud of the work they do and the product that we produce.
Thank you. Yeah, this is great effort that goes into this. I'll start down. Lindsay, on your end, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. So for classes that are 2.5 credits, are they offered twice in the same year so that students can take them at different points in the year, or is it like once only in the spring or only in the?
It really depends on how many course requests we, that we get. We totally build our schedule based on our course requests and staffing. So, you know, if we have 100 students that select, I don't know, Music Production 1, then we would want to try to run at least two semesters of that so we could try to get as many seats as we can. But there's, it's a big puzzle. It depends on how many staff we have, how many sections we can teach, and then, of course, the course request. So it really depends on our students' desires, how many courses we get to run.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Katie?
Oh, I have no questions. It's great. Fantastic.
Thank you.
That was a comment. Thank you very much. How about yourself? Any questions or comments?
No comments, I, I mean, no questions, but I, I really appreciate the diversity of courses and the, the work that goes into it and the, the meeting the students' needs. I'm really impressed. I, I was like, wow, I wish I, we had a lot of these courses back when I was taking, taking high school.
I know. Thank you.
Fabian?
Hi. I want to reiterate her comments and stuff. I do appreciate all the effort, and you do have a lot of courses. I wish I had them as well. I just wanted to ask, as I guess a parent and adult, I'm a little overwhelmed with all of the classes that are offered. I'm just wondering what kind of, I guess, support, because I know the, the kids are selecting the courses on their own, and what kind of support, I guess, you guys are providing them on an individual basis to make sure that they're aligned with the classes that they want to take for their careers and make sure they're not missing any essential classes.
Yeah, excellent question. So we do a couple of different things. We start this process now, in January. We have our eighth-grade showcase night. You might remember it from last year. We do that in January. It's the last Monday of January, so anyone watching at home, our eighth-grade parents and fam, and students are invited. That's one, that's basically our kickoff. That is our opportunity to educate our parents and students sort of in a broad sense of their course requirements. We have fabulous students that come and present for them, for, for our audience on the different course offerings and the wonderful things each department offers. Our, all of our directors are there and available, and then we have a club fair in the cafeteria, which we're bringing back this year now that we're fully up and running. So we'll have the club fair outside, so there's, we, that's one way. Then we're all available for, available questions as well. Then at all levels, eighth and nine through 11, students begin to talk to their classes and then their individual students within classes about what they recommend for them for the following school year in terms of either coursework or levels, honors, college or AP. And so they'll have those individual conversations with students. They'll make recommendations on the computer. And then school counselors have the opportunity to talk to students in a variety of different ways. If they're, if students are in sophomore seminar, they'll talk to kids then. And then there's some other emails and information that goes out through Nightline and, and those kinds of things, encouraging students to participate in the process and to really give it some serious thought, talking to parents, guidance counselors, student, teachers, previous students who might have some information about courses. And so about a month-long process. And then in March, usually in the first two weeks of March, we open up the course selection portal in Power School and so, or Parent Portal. And so students can then log in and they have the opportunity to select their courses. Then we run a report for all students and send them home to parents so that parents and students can see what they've signed up for, have the opportunity to make any tweaks that they need to, and then we, we're off and running for the course selection. And of course, anytime during that time, students can request a meeting with a school counselor or an administrator or a teacher at any time as well.
Okay, thank you. I just want to encourage for the students who are not advocates of themselves, for the teachers as well, to reach out as much as possible to make sure that everything's aligned.
Yeah, thank you. We will do that.
Thank you very much.
Very well.
So we appreciate the presentation. So what we are looking now is for the approval of the revised program of studies. So if we have no more discussion, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Stoughton High School Program of Studies 2023 to 2024.
Second.
Oh, quick.
I know. Didn't see that coming. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Ms. Miller, for coming, and thank you to you and your team for working on this and putting it together. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh. Would you like to stay for the DECA thing? I just saw that. Yeah, yeah. I thought you were going to do it. Are you?
I could, but Ms. Miller's here.
Okay, she is. I just didn't know. We didn't coordinate.
You didn't go fast enough.
I didn't, I know.
It's her fault.
I pointed it out before you left and had to come back.
Because I thought Dr. Rab was going to do it. Sorry. Okay, next item on the agenda. Guess whose turn it is, Ms. Miller?
All right. So our Stoughton High School DECA program currently being co-advised by Ms. Candace Camo and Ms. Amanda Lyden have had huge success in the past years and are also having success again this year. We have several students who have already qualified for the State Career Development Career, State Career Development Conference. And so in preparation for that, we have proposed or provided you with some information about what it would take to attend that conference. It is an overnight conference in Boston on Mar, from March 9th to March 11th, and per school, district policy that talks about field trips. We want to make sure that we have the opportunity to present to you all the facts and figures so that we might seek approval for the overnight field trip. And in addition to that, we are anticipating that we will have several students who will qualify for the International Career Development Conference, which takes place April 21st to the 26th. This one is in Orlando, Florida, which is out of state and clearly will be overnight. And so we would like to seek approval for our students to be able to attend that as well.
Okay.
I don't know if you want me to go through all the specific details, but all of the things, the, most of these costs are anticipated costs, as we don't know exactly yet how much, you know, rooms would cost at hotels, travel expenses, et cetera. So they are estimated, but I think it's a fairly accurate portrayal of what it would cost for our students to attend these.
Talking about this, right, we have these two to approve. Do you want to brag a little about the fact that?
That they're awesome?
Last week? Yeah, that they're awesome and last week that some of the students, it's kind of like the domino effect that go to these different competitions. So you had, how many students placed last week?
So I think we had 27 succeeded last week at the two-day competition, which was in Mansfield. And the competition is fabulous. I had the opportunity to attend briefly last week, and I get to judge in a couple of weeks as well. They, they, they have to, they, they get these, what's the word, little like role plays, like moments before, 10 minutes, 15 minutes before they're going to be judged. They have 10 to 15 minutes to prep. They have to prepare a whole host of, of, of a pitch to accompany, or they have to write some kind of program. And so it's an opportunity where they have to think on their feet, they have to be effective communicators, they have to be professionally dressed and present, present to the, the judges. It's a lot of pressure, and our kids just rock it every year. This year in Mansfield, like I said, we had approximately 27 students who qualified to go on to the next round. And then I would imagine that when we go in March, that we'll also have more than that qualify, or at least that many qualify to move on to the next round in some way.
That's great.
Yeah.
So the request is for overnight stay in Boston, one, and then the next is for out-of-state overnight stay?
Yep.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the DECA State Career Development Conference and Competition.
Do you?
Yeah, I'm just going to read it.
Second. Okay.
Adam and Chair, can I just add one thing and also to include approval to fundraise? Because they'll need to fundraise for both.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll make the motion to approve the State Career Development Conference Competition and to fundraise.
Okay, thank you. Second.
Second. Oh, you seconded, sorry.
Oh, but you know, all in favor, I'll let you go first.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Miller. Let me just scan the agenda.
I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to accept the DECA International Career Develop, Conference and Competition and fundraising.
And fundraising, yes. Second.
Oh, you're quick.
Catherine. What's going on over there? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck to all the students. I think one of our student advisor, right, you had, you had gone, right, last week?
Yeah.
You had fun?
It was really awesome.
Do you want to put the mic on?
It's truly like an amazing experience, and it was my first year ever trying it, so I thought it was really cool.
Oh, nice.
Oh, nice.
Oh, good for you. Okay. Thank you. That's great. The next item on the agenda is the school calendar draft presentation. Dr. Rab?
Thank you, Mrs. Rofey. There were two, two calendars that were under consideration. This year, they're very close to one another. September 1st falls on a Sat, on a Friday. And so the first one would have us starting school after Labor Day and have us, have a teacher professional day on Tuesday, the 5th, with kids coming back on the 6th. The other calendar would have us starting Friday, the teachers coming back Friday, the 1st, and then the students would come back on Tuesday, the 5th, right after Labor Day. And so those are really the two options. Everything else in the calendar is simply off by one day. So day 180 is either June 13th or June 14th, depending on which calendar we choose.
This portion of the meeting is just for you to get the drafts. You have it. And then the next step is I will reach out to our executive assistant to send a copy of both to the STA president, just to share, get their insight and input as well. And then at the next meeting, we would be looking to vote, okay? And that would be based on the recommendation from the superintendent, okay? Any questions? Okay, good. The next item is the superintendent formative evaluation. In your, in the packet here is the formative assessment that Dr. Rab filled out with the description of progress and if it was on, like where the progress was, on track, off track, et cetera. So this part of the process, I'm going to walk each of you through. So now that we have his feedback, these are based on the goals that we set at the beginning of the school year. And this is an update, kind of mid, mid-check-in on where things are. So what we would do is we would go aw, go away and look at this, read it, review it, and then what I'll ask is for each committee member individually to send me an email on each of these items with any feedback. As you see on the last page, it states school committee comments. So any comments that you have from a mid-year perspective, I'm going to ask that each of you send that to me. What I'll do is I'll put each of those in, in five bullets with feedback. And at the next public meeting, we will have that. I'll provide him with, you know, just an outlook on what that feedback is. And then what we would do is vote to approve the formative. And then the summative will come later toward the end of the school year, and that will be a much bigger, heavy lift for everybody involved, okay? Any questions?
When with this?
Sorry, it's okay. No, it's okay. Go ahead.
When is the, when is the next one?
So the next one's scheduled for March. So what we would do is we would have the kickoff in March, all of us, because this is the full committee, will provide all the feedback and be sure to collate it, and then try to get that completed so that we could have it and have a meeting before April, whatever date, election, to walk through the findings of that.
Okay.
That's it?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Katie, Mary-Kate?
Whoa. She's getting, it's after eight, she's getting a little crazy.
So, so the next thing on the agenda is the December 13th, 2022 minutes. Does anybody want to, does anybody have any feedback edits that they'd like to discuss? I'll start down on your end, Fabian.
No.
No? No? Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December 13th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Going up to old business, we have the South School Building Project Update. I'm going to hand it to you, Catherine, just to give an update on, I know that you attended your first meeting. Let us know how it went. And just any, anything, I, we don't need, I know it's just kind of kicking off, so anything that you learned in that?
Well, we have the next one tomorrow. So that one is, and then we, a key thing to note is that we have the community tour coming up on, what is on Saturday, January 21st, at 1 o'clock at the South School, so that people get a chance to actually be in the building and kind of get a sense of what, what's going on there. And the other one is a virtual one on the 24th at 7:00 PM. And we're really hoping that people participate in that because it's not just the committee saying, this is what we want to do. We're actually soliciting feedback from the community on the project. And it was interesting to talk to, you know, the, the designers that we selected are the ones that did the high school and they're, they're familiar with the community, but certainly they want feedback on the elementary school side and what we're looking for. And it, it is going to be a very big project because it's not potentially just replacing the school, it's replaced, potentially redistricting, going from five elementary schools to four and kind of their vision for, for the building, but versus our building, you know, our vision as a town. But they're certainly very conscious of students' pride and the sense of community and the economics of it. But, yeah, it, it, the process is in full swing, I mean, it's definitely moving quite along and it's, we're looking at, you know, going for town meeting to get additional funding for, to complete some of the assessment of the site and the redistricting possibility and then moving forward from there. And, you know, it's, it's exciting. I'm excited to be on the committee and the progress that's being made.
Are they going to talk about the potential redistricting in those forums?
Yes, that will be on part of, I, I forget how much is going to be covered in this, but it's, it is part of that. They're also looking to solicit, you know, what, what is important to us in a school, what is, what is, it's not just the building, but what's important to us as a town in terms of education, what our education philosophy is, and how that's going to translate to the building footprint, how the community would like to see the use of the facility possibility, for example, if, you know, the, the principals looking at being able to have basketball there or, you know, community events and have, being able to use the, the school for more than just the, the school, because it is a space used by the rec. department in the summer and by the library as well. So they're, having it be accessible to the community in a safe way, that takes into consideration the town's needs, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to be soliciting information, you know, feedback on both things, both the redistricting as well as the physical building and the educational plan.
Thank you. Dr. Rab, she mentioned funding, that's a big deal. Is that something we want to talk about publicly? Like, do we want people to know that
Sure, absolutely.
Building projects looking to get more funding, I think that would be, it's a pretty big deal. Do you mind sharing?
Absolutely. So the building committee is going to be putting forward an article for an additional $200,000 in order to really be able to fund the last bits of the project. They were, they were able to get pretty far with the allocation, but what became clear is as we were going over the contract for the designer as well as the OPM, we had those allocation, the $750,000 allocation, those numbers were considered two and a half years ago, and everything has gotten more expensive in the last two and a half years. And while they were very efficient in putting together those contracts, additional funding is necessary to complete all of the site work that needs to be done for the different options over the summer and into the fall, as well as a consultant for the redistricting and a consultant to make sure that we have all the components necessary for the MSBA. We're targeting a May 2024 special town meeting to look at the project funding agreement, and we want to make sure that we stay on track. So at its last meeting, the school building committee approved going to special town, not special town, meaning annual town meeting, to request additional funding.
So I think it's important for the school committee to make, make aware of those things, even though the building committee, it's a subcommittee, right, to the town. It's essentially building a building that the school committee has authority over. So what would be helpful is any large things like that, that we obviously are going to get stopped at the grocery store and have to answer to, even though it's the building committee bringing it forward, would be important for us to get as an, from an, an update in these meetings, okay?
Absolutely, I'll include that.
So if we can make sure that the South School Building Project Update that you, at next meeting, give us a follow-up to that and just let us know what's going on with that, expectations on that, I think the public should be made aware that there's going to be an ask to fund additional money.
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions for Catherine? No? No, oh, you can sit over here, sorry, I didn't realize you'd be, like, do you want, you can sit at the table because the budget's coming up soon if you want, just quietly, I don't. Okay, thank you, Catherine. It's a great, hey, by the way, that was a great first update. It's a lot of information.
Yes, I think.
I think you did pretty good.
Wonderful, yeah.
Right? Yeah, good for you.
Thank you.
You're retaining it, I like it. It's a lot of information, isn't it?
It's a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot.
There's a lot of work.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm really impressed by how much has been done and how far we've come.
It's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot to go, but it, it is exciting.
Yeah, that's great. The next item is an update on the reorganization that we had discussed at the last meeting. I ask you and Mr. Ford to give some type of insight or update on thoughts on this. Just looked up like, huh? I'm sorry you had to wake up. No, no, but Dr. Rab first, if, no, I said both, sorry. So if there's any insight, anything, anything you want to add to it, Mr. Ford after?
Sure. We're excited to present the reorganization, and we've incorporated this into the budget that we're going to talk about in a little while. But what we're really trying to do in a district this size is provide a staffing that will help not only the staff here, but also the students as well, and make sure that our staff knows who to go to. We're a pretty large district and we have a small administrative staff here. We only have one assistant superintendent. And we have a bit of a human resources department, but we don't have a comprehensive human resources department. And so I'm including in the FY '24 budget, two additional assistant superintendents and then reorging some of our existing departments under those. And so an assistant superintendent for health and human resources, which would not only take over the nurses and our health services, but also the registration and residency coordinator and a human resources specialist to really be able to streamline human resources. We have over 600 staff, all of whom avail themselves of our human resources on a regular basis. And would also include in that an administrative assistant, an assistant superintendent for technology and maintenance, which would bring three departments together, technology, food service, as well as maintenance. They have an affinity. Right now, those departments are talking to one another on a regular basis, and this would provide oversight for all three, putting to, putting them together. It would allow the superintendent to have kind of a superintendent's cabinet and have a limited number of people, directors, who are reporting directly to the superintendent. And one of the pieces of this reorg is really to make people's titles commensurate with what they do. So if you're a director, you're reporting to the superintendent. If you're a supervisor, you're reporting to a director. If you're a coordinator, you're reporting to a supervisor. And it really will streamline and allow all the staff to know who to go to for a particular issue, but also who is directly responsible and allow for the chain of command, such as it is, to be very clear for everybody. And so we've been able to embed this reorg into the '23 and '24 budget as, as part of our special town meeting allocation and then moving into '24. And it's, it's an exciting opportunity and it's one that I'm very much looking forward to.
So if I could just add to this, this has actually been something I think we've been talking about for about a part of a decade. This whole process actually began when we looked at the directors at the high school and our curriculum team, and we went through the process of trying to figure out how to build a centrally located, centralized curriculum support team to then work with the district and begin the process of having a more comprehensive administrative focus. And that was probably 12 years ago that we actually did that. When you look at the amount of money that we spent on administration, we actually only spent about 60% of what other districts spend, if you look at what comes out of the average perpul expenditure. And although this doesn't fully close together, it actually brings us very far along, so we don't have administrators with, you know, with people with 20 job titles trying to do a balancing act and get everything done, as opposed to being able to focus on, on the most important aspects of our job, which is providing kids with what they need to be successful. And I think in delineating the tasks and spreading everything out, there's a clear expectation of who does what, and allows people to have a specific focus on what's important, as opposed on just powering through the day and ensuring the fact that all the tasks are accomplished. So I, I think this is a huge investment in the district. I appreciate the school committee's confidence in us to pull this whole piece off and bring it forward, and I believe this will have a tremendous impact on the district moving forward in the years to come.
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment to thank Katie and myself for actually creating it and coming forward with it and asking if this was something that would be, you, Mr. Ford, were ready to go. You guys were waiting to do this for a while, but this is something that we think's important for the staff, not just students, but faculty and staff, so that they're able to actually know where to go when there's a need within the district. Right now, I think that those lines are very blurred and being able to have a smaller, an actual human resources area where you have the EDI coordinator and the civil rights coordinator, which currently is you, Mr. Ford, along with the deputy superintendent role, along with the head of curriculum, along with the head of central registration, keep, tell me what else that
Homeless liaison, homeless education coordinator, civil rights coordinator, take care of student teacher placements.
So there's all that and, all right, shut us mic off, let's shut us mic off.
What about the grants?
Yeah, but the grants, doing all the title. So the point was, there's so many different things, at some point, someone might have, have a question and might need something, and there's only two of you. And at times, some people don't feel comfortable going to some folks with a question, and this helps delineate certain areas within the administration where some people can go to that area, and it's not so much going to the only two people that perhaps are the ones that are making those decisions all the time, but to areas within the assistant superintendent's departments that helps kind of make it a little more easier to access. And I think by standardizing the titles, it gives a clearer understanding of if this person is at this title, I know they report to one of these, I know they report to this area. So that was kind of like the gist we came, right, like with the proposal that we had brought forward. And I think that reorging it in the budget, meaning not adding 80 people, but reorging it and shifting and positions that were previously weren't filled before and being able to kind of reorganize those into a different position and create that, and not getting rid of any jobs, is pretty spectacular, given the fact that in the fall town meeting, we got quite a significant amount of money for Chapter 70. We were able to add, I think, 25 or 26 paras, we were able to add mass specialists, a lot to that, the, the curriculum and the, that kind of, I'm sure Jonathan, you're chomping at the bit to say more roles we added. We added a lot of roles from that perspective, but in order to be able to, I think, help them and, and being able to balance things out, have, making this change hopefully will, will help streamline some of the stuff. I think the HR piece threw me off, it's thrown me off for years that that didn't exist here. It was in the business office, it was someone that's half an FTE, right, basically, that's, doesn't, so I hope that this makes sense and then, you know, I hope that you've communicated this to people. Yeah?
I've started to.
Okay, started to communicate it, I hope, and that this is what the thought process is, and this is what we're going to talk about the next meeting again, to continue going with it, so that essentially we will be looking to approve the new org structure and then moving forward from there. Any questions or anything, any feedback? Katie, do you have anything to add?
I love the chart you managed, what you said.
Thank you.
It's very easy to read.
Yeah.
I appreciate it there.
Thank you. The color coding.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know, I know Mr. Ford was very excited.
Yeah, actually, you kind of jumped up.
Yeah, he saw that document and said, you know, oh, I can follow this. So, yeah, it's great. I just hope it helps staff, faculty and staff, to be able to actually see areas and where they can go and feeling comfortable to be able to go to certain areas, you know? But, anyway, there's that piece, it'll be back on the adj, next agenda. And then also, I know that we shared that with the president of the union as well. I met with him to just kind of let him have an idea of what the reorg structure would look like and talk through kind of the reasoning behind that and the thoughts with that and he provided very good feedback, and we, we appreciate his honesty. And it gave us a lot to think about and make adjustments. But anyway, I think the important part that you didn't mention, Dr. Rab, that I just, can't help but mention in the org and then I'll drop it, is the fine arts department. I just think it's important to, to note, with a lot of students, we saw it in the, in the program of studies, and we have a lot of students that are interested in the fine arts, and we have an amazing fine arts area department. And it's important for us to, you know, not only just have, you know, we have stipends for certain extra clubs and things of that nature, but it's really to invest in the arts, where that'll be important to kind of delineate that and start to build on the art program in the stone public schools outside of just, you know, we have the music, but we put it all together. Now it's kind of, let's create these two kind of departments and build on the arts as well. So that one for me, I'm excited about because it's, fine arts is a way for a lot of individuals to express themselves and, I don't know, that was just the one I think we should have tooted. We should toot a little louder on, but, anyway. The next item on the agenda is FY '24 budget and articles.
Sure, thank you, Mrs. Ropie. There are no changes to the articles, but for the budget, we really went through it, especially after special town meeting and taking into account the reorg. And while there are no changes to the bottom lines, there's no changes to the bottom line of the budget, none of those numbers have changed, we really went through it for look and feel, to make sure the budget was understandable. I'd like to thank the committee for, for recommendations that way, to make sure that the budget made sense. So we put departments together, looking at this reorg. We wanted to make sure that anybody looking at this budget would be able to understand who is in which department, where they go, you know, not only with salaries but with categories. And really, we improved the look and feel of the overall document. And I think when we're presenting this at annual town meeting, when anybody is looking at this document, it'll be a lot clearer exactly where our expenses are. We also put several notes in one of the columns, if people see a large change, either to the positive or to the negative, it's noted, is that a resignation, is that a contractual increase, is that a supply cost increase, is that a textbook renewal? So that this way, people can take a look and know immediately without having to ask what some of these areas are. The important thing to note in this budget, and, and I, I want to say it again, is that this is a flat budget. So the 1.91% increase is simply converting the special town meeting articles that we approved back in, in November and in putting them into the FY '24 budget. So this is a flat budget moving forward. All the increases, the 1.91%, is the remainder of those Chapter 70 funds that came in during '23 and now are moving into '24, because we have no worries about '24, the Chapter 70 funding will come in again, and we've been able to use all of those funds in the school budget. The changes here are really around look and feel and making sure that everything is crystal clear to anybody who were to take a look at it. And I truly want to thank the committee for all their help in helping me understand this and putting this together in a way that everybody would, would understand and be able to take a look at. So I would ask the committee to, to revote this budget, knowing that the bottom line numbers haven't changed, but some of the individual line numbers were updated.
So I'm going to jump in just because I worked on it quite significantly.
Sure, thank you.
The cover sheet or the budget summary, is that red and bold? Maybe we just don't want to bold it, seems kind of obscene, like the bold red, a lot. So just that, and I think that doesn't read 100% well, like the note that you typed in, so.
Okay.
Where it says FY '20 '24 approved budget is a flat budget, I think that maybe, I don't know if we can just come up in this meeting with better wording, just so it sounds better than saying budget is a flat budget.
Sure.
So Katie, do you have any suggestions?
No, I was just, I'm looking at the, the little side notes.
And perhaps it's, this, you know, I just think that needs to be, so we need to focus on that
Okay.
When we approve it, so we approve the correct wording, because then it says the not, 1.91% increase represents the remainder of the Chapter 70 funds that came in during FY '23 budget season, used towards two articles at special meeting, it just doesn't make sense.
Awkward, yeah.
It just doesn't make, I think I said, can you put something, and you wrote exactly what I asked for? I think we just need to maybe change it so someone can understand it. I think we understand it, but, does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Fabian, does that make sense?
Happy to brainstorm ideas.
It doesn't read well. I don't want to confuse anybody, maybe?
No. I think it's probably like
I think that maybe it could be like the 1.91% represents, like put an asterisk next to the 1.91% on the summary and then put an asterisk where the red is, unbolded, and state like the 9.9, 9.91% not increased, because it's really not an increase, it's the Chapter 70 money we got in the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, last spring, we got last spring, the Chapter 70 money, right? And we just, right, was appointed, but it came in, yeah, this year, but in July.
Mm-hmm.
So that was in the fall. So I, I'm thinking like if we just say like the 9.11% represents the, you know, the remainder of the Chapter 70 funds that was, what's the word?
Allocated or?
That the state gives us, it's a word, that was appointed, not appointed, but was allocated to, not allocated.
Chapter 70 money.
Yeah, but it's funded, yeah.
Funded?
Funded, the state funded, you know what I mean? Jonathan, jump in here, because I know you're smirking, you know what I'm trying to get to.
For a specific word I'm trying to come up with.
I know the word, it's not there, but you know what I'm saying? I think we just need to be very clear, so it's just no misconceptions. Yeah, the 1.91% represents the remainder, Chapter 70 funds that were used to purchase, used on two articles during the special town meeting, the whatever date town meeting.
Include the date, 11/20.
I guess, yeah, so just so people are aware, and no one else knows except us and maybe the two that watched them tonight, maybe like 80 that watched, but I think, you know, just to be a little clearer when someone sees it, and then representing a flat budget for the FY24 year would be at the end. I think. I just think we need to make it clearer. This seems like more of a note, like, I think I said it, like, can you put something on there, but I, right?
Yeah.
A little too literal, okay.
It's too, yeah, like, yeah, I don't know, I don't mean to say that, I'm sorry. No, I just mean like if we can, it's, I wanted the note to explain to people that are reading it. We did not, contrary to belief, it's no agreement, we had no agreement with anybody, and this is literally what we promised FinCom and town meeting when we had come forward and we went to FinCom, we stated that we would be coming forward with a flat budget for FY24, and the difference between the two, we got $4 million from the state, and we put forward an article in the fall town meeting for the 2.8 million because we knew in such what notice that that's what we could align, like, align and spend during this FY23 school year, and then we knew those two articles, which made up the difference between the 4 million that we were allocated, we would just come in at a flat rate this year by using just that money that was used for those two articles. So there's no increase, we're not asking for any additional money, we're not asking for anything on top of the 4 million that we got in additional last year. So we just want to make sure we're clear. And then I think it's important to note that when this budget was redone and we moved things throughout each department, what we initially had, which is messy in my opinion, was we had different positions that maybe were being taken out of different accounts. There was like some salaries or pieces where they might have worked across different departments, so they were being taken out of different accounts within the budget, and that doesn't really make it easy to really figure out or say to someone, I have this many FTEs in this department and this many FTEs in this department. Part of this reorg and the cleanup was to make sure that when you're assessing those roles and responsibilities, is moving them into the appropriate department and that salary is allocated accordingly. It's no longer across multiple, and I think that that is a clean accounting way, and that's why we are doing this revision, because when the fall town meeting occurred, it was a very short timeline between then and when we had to approve the budget, so we couldn't make, we knew what we were coming in at a bottom line, so we voted on that, but this was a cleanup to align all of the funds from the special town meeting into the FY23 numbers as we stated in the article, and then doing the '24. Okay, anyway.
What do you kind of officials are at a column heading for why the changes occurred?
They're right, it could, but it's over here too, like it says FTEs, it depends, so this is done at FinCom's request about five years ago, we started doing it, and we just put them in, so when he presents, when Dr. Rab presents, he's able to just speak to it, and then we just delete it out, but the column isn't consistent as a comment column because it also includes some salaries broken out that we were asked to break out. So, I was just going to get up and walk over, but I don't think I can do that on TV. So, on page one, if you look at it, under superintendent's office, you see how in that column, it's got those numbers, that's breaking out like that office, but then below, it's got, it tells you the difference contractual increases, it's, so it's kind of dual usage, yeah. So Lindsay, do you have any questions or anything? I was just waiting. No? So I guess what we would need to do is we would need to vote to approve the revised, cleaned budget that has the departments in their appropriate order with the, as edited or whatever earlier. So I don't know if someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the new and approved FY24 budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Did you say as, as revised?
I said new and approved.
Okay, okay, good, that's good enough. I speak Pina Inokian. Okay, that, and then other matters, just making sure I didn't miss anything. Give me a second, guys. Yep, okay, so for other matters, I'm just going to pause, I don't know, Sam, if you had anything to add for other matters? I know you confirmed you can come to the next meeting too, so we'll let you speak at the next meeting, we'll put a different section on, just push the button to green if you want. There you go, hon.
We just have like a few things going on at the school. I know that this Saturday, there's a dance being hosted by a new organization at the school called IDK, it's Intelligent Diverse Scholars or Knights, I think, and they have some form of a dance for the new year, and it's like a masquerade theme. And then, student council was planning to have a winter wonderland hallways type of thing, because we didn't get to do the holiday hallways based off just planning. And I was also planning on sometime soon putting together a drive for formal wear, because some kids can't afford to get a prom dress or a suit or a nice shirt, so, and many people have extras or ones that they've worn and don't want to wear again, so I was going to see if I could put together a drive for anyone that would like to come in, look at them and take some home and see if they can get something.
That's a good idea.
About it going on.
Yeah, oh, that's nice. Are you, so that's what's coming up in the next month? Is there anything like for student council that's going on, or?
We have our CMASK event, which is in February, and we go on a field trip to another school, and we meet with like our region of student councils, and we all get to like meet, have fun, we go to workshops for leadership, and we usually run a workshop, and we do some form of like relay where everyone gets to like have fun, and it's really cool, it's a great experience. So we're having our council members like apply to be able to go, and we're bringing about 15 students to that.
Nice. Oh, that's cool. Oh, I can't wait to hear about that at one of our meetings.
It's super fun.
Yeah, oh, nice. Thank you. I'll start, any other matters on your end?
Just the correspondence with that, are we going to?
Yeah, you can bring it up.
No, we got a few correspondence regarding the flags.
Items on walls.
Items on walls, so, but I read that you addressed it, Sandra, you reached out to people. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive emails, thank you very much for sending them to the full school committee, and that's it.
Yeah, I'll acknowledge that we received correspondence for the full school committee. There was about three, I think, maybe four, maybe three, but we forwarded those to Dr. Rab and felt it was best that Dr. Rab respond to those as this was a matter that Dr. Rab was managing and had create, created the rule or made the decision, so we felt it was best for an opportunity for Dr. Rab to reach out to people and offer a discussion and try to understand points of views and then see where that would take things and what direction. So there was that component. And then, I'm trying to think of any other matters, is there anything else? National Honor Society induction is this Thursday, that's for the juniors, so congratulations to those students, I know that that's coming up, and then, trying to think of what else, there's so much stuff. I think that's it, that's all I've got, it's been a long night.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so, yeah, so that's the gist for other matters on my end. That brings us to the last thing that conclude the last thing on the agenda, so we are now going to adjourn, and our next meeting is scheduled, tentatively scheduled for February 14th. So I'll ask for a motion to close.
Are you going to be my Valentine?
I said tentatively, did you notice that?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have a great evening, everyone, and thank you for those who joined this evening.